Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
Some of.
For a second. Thank you, Sandy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, the fours have it, so the mo- motion carries and please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Great. Okay. I am, hold on a second, pulling up my agenda. Okay, so we are on public input number one. So if they're, welcome everybody first to the January tenth, twenty twenty-two Sag Harbor School Board of Education meeting first, at, it is now six thirty-four and we are on public input number one. So if there's anybody from the public who has a question to address to the board or our superintendent, now would be the time to do that question or statement. You'll have three times once recognized. Um, and the way to do that is just raise your hand in the chat box and Mr. Fisher will unmute you. So is there anybody here at this time for public input number one?
I do not see anybody.
Okay, and I don't see any, nor do I see any questions in the chat box. So with that, we will move on to section five of tonight's agenda, the superintendent's report. Uh, Mr. Nichols.
Thanks, Brian. Um, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the current um climate with COVID and and some of the things that the school is uh doing and and wrestling with as it relates to um the school community's safety uh and keeping our students in school. So first Suffolk County, the the data uh which is really yesterday's data had a twenty-four point one percent test positive rate. That had peaked um in the high twenties within the last week or so. Uh, and I anticipate or I I think that that was probably due to the the follow-up with regard to people traveling over the break. Um, but we start, we still are in the high twenties. The seven-day average is twenty-six point four. Um, in terms of how it's playing out uh in the Sag Harbor schools, uh, you know, we're consistent with what's happening in other area schools. We've seen an uptick in cases that's been going on for over a month now. Um, the community receives letters from us. Some, some people are sort of getting tired of those letters, but we feel it's important to to update the community um each day um with a number of cases uh by school. Um, with regard to students and staff, there was a significant change um with regard to specificity um that we wrote the community about uh and beginning after break if um in addition to the, the notice that the superintendent puts out, the building principals are putting more detailed information out uh to families. And we made that move um as it relates to FERPA because within FERPA, it gives the right of educational institutions uh to assess the conditions on the ground. And if the educational institution believes that the conditions warrant um a relaxing of the privacy um guidance in in the interests of the people under their charge, the educational institution is allowed to do that. And so we've done that and more specific information has been going out to families. Um, so they can better monitor and and assess what they would like to do with their children, whether it's get them tested or something like that. Um, the other thing that's, that's changed quite a lot in the last few weeks, uh and it's a challenge for all school districts, is the ever-changing guidance. So the way that that guidance works and and this may be redundant because I may have talked about it before is the Center for Disease Control and Prevention uh issues a, a statement or their guidance. Uh, then the New York State Department of Health uh usually within a week adopts that guidance or some uh form of that guidance. And then lastly, the Suffolk County Department of Health uh issues a statement and that's ultimately what we choose to follow and what school districts in in Suffolk County follow. Uh, the most recent example of this is that uh the New York State Department of Health on January fourth issued uh guidance relaxing or reducing the isolation and quarantine periods. So previously, uh those periods were ten days. So if Jeff Nichols tested positive for COVID, um either from the onset of symptoms or if I was asymptomatic from the test date, I would be obligated to, to isolate for ten days. Um, the CDC and then the New York State Department of Health on January fourth issued guidance saying that that could be moved to five days. On January sixth, Suffolk County Department of Health came out and um endorsed that policy, but within their guidance made it optional for school districts to either move to the five days or stay at ten. And initially, we had some, um, we were uncertain about whether or not there was that discretionary piece. We consulted our uh school attorney who, who confirmed that it was purposely allowing districts to make a choice uh the guidance. And so at this point, uh, our school district has decided to stay with the ten-day isolation and a ten-day quarantine uh because we feel it's another uh safety measure. When you look at the research out there, um, and by no means am I a scientist, there is debate as to whether or not uh people at five days can continue to spread the virus. And it just seems that given um the high uh test positive rate around us and the number of cases around us, it, it, it would be prudent to stick with ten days for now. I think the metric that may force us to change that uh would be staffing levels moving forward. Uh, thankfully, right now, uh, the staffing absences uh have not result and have not resulted in staffing levels that would necessitate us going to a remote situation. Um, which then segues into our, my last comment in my superintendent's report, which is that uh at the elementary school and at the middle school, high school, since break, uh Ms. Carriero and Mr. Malone and the other administrators uh have rolled out increased remote options uh for students who are either quarantined or in isolation so that families are are making the best decisions for the school community. Uh, and if they have a student or a child who's exhibiting symptoms and they don't know if it's COVID, um, they're keeping their children home, knowing they could access the remote learning while they get their child tested. And so, you know, we're doing everything we can to encourage everybody to be as responsible as they can be uh and to not send uh children to school uh who are symptomatic um at any time. So that's pretty much the superintendent's report. I'm happy to answer any questions. My last comment would be that uh I anticipate that there will be this continuing trend of changing guidance. Uh, and and the theme from my perspective seems to be um to, to prioritize keeping schools open. Uh, and as part of that uh prioritization, almost a relaxing of uh a lot of the protocols. Some of those, some of those decisions based in science that's not debatable uh and some decisions based in science that is debatable, which puts uh school districts in a dicey position. But that's, that's the report for tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. And before we turn it over to the board or the public, just, just to clarify that it's not that our student population has an option to remote. It's only in the limited instances where there is a quarantine or other situation. And to clarify for the public, the administration isn't proving that. The building administrators and/or yourself, and it's not an opt-in or opt-out, just so that um everybody's clear on that.
Yeah, thanks for um emphasizing that, Brian. That is correct. We do not have a remote option. Um, as you just said, for families who who just want to keep their children home for, for what they see as a valid reason. It, it's only for students who are subject to uh quarantine or isolation um at this time.
Great. Are there any board questions for Mr. Nichols or the administration at this time? Is there anybody from the public attending uh that has a question with respect to the COVID update that we just heard from our superintendent? Now would be the time to uh raise your hand to be recognized or put your question into the chat box. Mr. Fisher?
Don't see any hands raised.
I just wanna say, um, Jeff is a leader of the district. I, I appreciate the efforts that are being made to kind of move as things move and do what we can to keep the district open and running as as smooth as possible. And a lot of work goes into that and uh it's, it's appreciated.
Absolutely. Okay, with that, if there's nothing else, uh, let's move on to the principal's report.
We'll start with Mr. Malone.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Nichols. Good evening, everyone. So um, I guess, I guess um good start to the twenty-two, twenty-two school uh or twenty-two-year portion of the school year. We um, you know, as Jeff mentioned, we've, we have been challenged by this recent surge. Um, a number of staff members out and um a lot of children and their families working through um some of the quarantine restrictions. But I'd say in spite of that, we, we had a good first week back and today went well. Just to elaborate briefly on um what Jeff shared about our remote, the remote piece at the elementary school, I was um, I was very appreciative of our school nurses, Ms. Kriegsman and Ms. Um Poitras, who helped us put together a list early in the week of children impacted by the quarantines and our um assistant principal, Ms. Ray Noso and school counselor, Mrs. Grant actually called all those families just to um do a check-in, see how things were going, uh, make sure families were okay. Um, first and foremost, and then explain that at the elementary school, so pre-K through five in an age-appropriate manner, obviously, the, the youngest children can handle things differently than the um fourth and fifth graders. But at the elementary school, the, the children have check-ins during the day via Google Meet. So teachers may meet with children on quarantine and have those children and their classmates speak through, through the use of the Google Meet technology, and then maybe do that again in the afternoon. Again, in an age-appropriate fashion, and then through Google Classroom or um maybe emailings directly with the parents, uh assignments are given for the children to work on, and then check back in the following day. Um, we did also just let the families know that we understand this is challenging and when the children come back to school, we'll assess um collectively and if some additional support is needed, we'll put that in place. So overall, um definitely, you know, a challenging time for all of our schools. We're, we're getting through it, um, I think as best we can. And um, you know, hopefully, as, as Jeff was saying, we'll maybe see a decrease in the numbers and in the next few weeks, we'll kind of return back to how things were before the holidays.
Great. Are there any board questions for Mr. Malone? Sounds like uh everything's moving a well, moving well from what we hear. So we really appreciate the efforts of you, Mr. Malone, and your, you know, faculty and staff down there.
Very well.
Mr. Nichols?
Uh, Ms. Carriero?
All right, so the middle high school had a good kickoff for the start of the twenty-twenty-two school year and the second half of the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. Our students came back ready to learn. We, I want to say kudos to our staff and faculty because we had to fill in a lot um because of the uptick. We, we were a little almost at capacity with staff, and I want to say thank you to our staff um for working so hard and jumping in and taking roles on that they normally do not and work as a team. As Mr. Malone touched upon with the remote option, it's a bit different in the middle high school. Our, some of our students just are not feeling well, so they're not gonna remote in. But at the same time, some of them do opt-in and they have to talk to myself to be approved and talk to the other administrators, Mr. Guinan or Ms. Rodriguez Mora. It is a synchronous learning environment for us at the middle high school, so students follow the bell schedule and their teachers send them the, the direct link. So just like Mr. Nichols stated before, students can't access this and just stay home. The teachers provide the link to the students um for the students that are accessing that remote option. And it's again, just like Mr. Malone said, if they need more help or support when they get back, they can totally um access the tutoring that we will provide. For students that aren't feeling well, we are going to just continue to provide tutoring when they get back so that they can, um, some people are um getting COVID and ta- and having it differently. It's the start, it's the end of the, almost the second semester, which ends on January twenty-eighth in the middle high school. It's big for our high school students. We are not going to be doing midterms this year just because the COVID numbers are high and students are trying to catch up. And we feel like it's fair and just for our students not to be added that added stress during the end of the um second semester, and our teachers are on board with that as well. And then for our seniors, the ED two um deadline, not the deadline, but the judgment day, I want to call it, but the, they will soon find out in early February and then, of course, in late March, they find out for their regular decision. So that's what's going on in the middle high school.
Great. Um, I, I have a question, but any, any board questions for Ms. Carriero?
Uh, I have a question. Is, how is IB being affected by this at this moment?
Mr. Gunn, you want to answer that? Because they came out with some adjustments.
Yeah, um, IB throughout the whole pandemic has been adapting. Um, and I imagine um there will be some amendments to the assessment, meaning they'll be lessened somewhat. Um, and we'll keep all the students and their families informed.
Great.
Great. Thank you.
Is there, my question is career or, and to Mr. Guinan, um, in terms of application process, has, how has that been affected with COVID? Or how just has that process going for our seniors or juniors or, you know, in general with two years now of this?
So the application process is a little bit differently and a lot of schools have foregone the SAT ACT standardized test to get in. Um, however, Ms. Motto's been working really hard. Some of the deadlines have shifted later because of it. So for example, our students that sometimes apply to Suffolk Community has extended and it's, they had to start their application in January, and usually we start it before the December break and they wouldn't be knowing, but they would get their notification now. Um, so some of the deadlines have shifted in that sense, and I think a lot of our students um not as much opted for the early decision option. We've seen a lot more students applying and the, I want to say the applicant pool is a little more tough than normal, so they're all going the um, the, a lot of them, not all them, but a lot of them are going the regular decision route so that they could apply to more schools. And kudos to Ms. Motto for working really hard and meeting with kids constantly and making sure that each of our seniors has a plan. Mr. Gunn, you want to add? Did I miss anything?
I think you captured everything. I mean, for the most part, I think things are going smoothly and have gone as they have in years past.
Great. Uh, okay. Any other board questions um for our administrators? Okay. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Uh, is there a motion for consent agenda items seven point two through seven point eight? Is there a second? Any discussion? No discussion? Okay. Uh, Ms. Adamchek, I vote aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Voting for everybody else?
I just need Yorgos and Ryan. Uh, thank you, Yorgos.
This went through.
Thank you.
I got kicked out.
You can vote, you can tell Mary your vote if you'd like, Ryan, if you're comfortable with that.
Yep, I'm an aye.
Thank you.
That's unanimous.
Great, thank you. Uh, section eight of tonight's meeting, the committee reports, the Educational Facilities Planning Committee. Is there anyone here who can, would update the public and the board with respect to that committee?
Yeah, so um, I think Yorgos and I are gonna kind of, you missed, there were two meetings since our last
Great.
last, went over this. So I'll discuss the uh, what we went over in the November meeting, and I think Yorgos will go over the uh subsequent meeting.
Uh huh.
Uh, so back in November, uh, Mr. Nichols was able to um join us and discuss um and update the, the committee on the status of the Mash Park negotiations and the status of the plan uh for the proposed improvements to the park. And he answered questions that the committee had regarding that. Uh, that was a lengthy discussion. We appreciate his time and insights. Um, we also discussed some uh the backfield at the, the middle high school and potential options to make them more viable. Um, acknowledging that there are times of the year where um the grass field is, is not usable just because of the condition it, it becomes in after heavy use. Um, H two M, our engineer architect, offered pro bono to provide some options. Um, this has come up in the past, but uh for new turf options for a surface that maybe could be used to potentially replace the grass field. The committee was um receptive to that and would like to request the board to support H two M moving forward with coming up with some alternative ideas and proposals that maybe we could present and potentially bring to vote um this year or sometime in the near future. We also discussed the establishment of subcommittees to discuss uh long-term goals for each of the buildings. So kind of leaning into uh, you know, short-range planning and then uh looking down the road more long-range. That was the, the just, the gist of it, but um, we're looking for the board to support us in kind of exploring additional options for that backfield again.
And then there were two other items that we touched base on the following meeting. So the one was that uh we're gonna organize subcommittees for the high school, middle school, and then elementary um buildings to review the long-term facility needs. And then uh the second item uh with that's upon, uh Peter Solo did a big presentation on the courtyard proposal. Um, so that's something like we're discussing also.
Great. Board questions with, any board questions, thoughts or comments, discussion with respect to the thought of pursuing or, or inquiring as to other options for more usability of the field as Ryan and Yorgos indicated? Board thoughts, anybody? Anybody can weigh in at this time?
Uh, yeah, have, Jeff, have you been involved in these conversations or are you aware of um, um, of this moving forward with Severio?
Yes.
Okay, and your feeling on this is?
My feeling is that uh specifically what, what Ryan was seeking, which is some additional information regarding the options that are available. What's changed in the last couple of years? I think uh that uh specific step is warranted.
Okay. Good, okay. If you think it's oriented, I'm good.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's great to pursue any and all options that give us, you know, we're always limited in terms of, in my opinion, we're limited in terms of space and usable space and that, you know, creates a lot of traffic on those, on that, on that area. So if there's something that can be done, um, I think it's worth investigating, in my opinion. It sounds like Mr. Nichols is working with the board, with the uh subcommittee on that and giving some direction, so I don't hear any objections from the board about moving forward with that and and inquiring further.
So I just questioned the, this is just to get more information, is that right?
No, you're just, yes to everything, Alex. No, yes, for, for more information on what we're going to do.
My understanding of it, Alex, was for, and Ryan, feel free to clarify, was for H two M to provide um some updated information to the facilities committee regarding uh materials used in turf so that there's a better understanding or an updated understanding of, of what turf is versus the understanding that was there two or three years ago.
Uh huh.
Ryan, do you want to add to that?
No, I think that's accurate. I think um H two M presented that the technology in the turf over the last couple of years has advanced quite a bit. And some of the concerns that were previously surrounding the turf field have um waned a bit or gone away completely. And uh, I think he certainly thought it was worth, you know, from my perspective, the finding a way to optimize that space, um, if it's a safe and effective treatment um and low maintenance and a reasonable cost, it seems to be prudent to research and consider. Because the, the existing condition of the field doesn't seem to be uh viable on a full-time basis for what it's used for now.
Yeah, and just, just to add to Ryan's um comments, so the discussion, I think we, we touched upon even from the first meeting we had this year. And uh, you know, there's a lot of new um materials right now, like organic turf and everything else, that it doesn't have the health effects that the previous solution had. So this is why we're trying to explore, because right now, you know, the field the way it is, it's like not really usable in the winter. So in order for us to be able to provide like all the needs and cover the needs we have for the district, uh, we just wanted to explore what other options do we have to be able to like do this. And I think this is what this conversation is around.
So I mean, just speaking for myself, I, I certainly don't see anything wrong with getting more information. Uh, and I know there have been the, the grass doesn't seem to be working out the way that we had hoped. Um, I think we ought to, you know, make sure we're getting uh, you know, a fair amount of information and not just being fed something from a company that wants to sell us turf. But um, the idea of getting more information um about different options seems to me that that can only be a positive thing.
I agree.
Yep, I agree. Okay, I think you guys have the will of the board, the answer.
Thank you all.
Uh, are there any discussion items that the board um would like to see on future agendas that we've left off? I'm taking a running list to add those to future meetings. If there's anything that anyone would want, now would be the time to let me know. Okay. Uh, with that, we will go to public input number two. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak, address the board with any questions or comments? Now would be the time to do that. You please raise your hand and you will be recognized and have three minutes, or you can put your question into the chat room and the board and/or the superintendent and administration will address it. Mr. Fisher?
There are no hands at this time.
All right, let me check the chat room. I see no questions in the chat room. Okay, um, with that, section eleven of tonight's agenda, um, I'm gonna ask for a mo- wait a second. I see a question that popped up, so let's just see here. It's been canceled, never mind. Okay, continuing. I'm gonna ask the board uh if a motion, for a motion to convene into executive session to discuss contracts and collective bargaining unit negotiations. If the motion will carry, the board will go into executive discuss session to discuss those matters. Um, at the end of which, we will come out of executive session for the sole purpose of closing the public meeting. The board will not take any action at that time. Before I ask for that motion, I see some popping up in the chat room. Give me one moment to see.
Um, I can answer the question.
Great, thank you, Brittany.
No worries. So Ms. Butler asked, Brittany, you say that mid, middle school midterms are canceled. Middle school doesn't have any midterms, but middle and high school students, but the high school students, we normally have a midterm schedule where we um for core content area classes, there's days designated to take midterms historically. Last year, we didn't do it during the pandemic. This year, we are not holding any midterms again, just like last year. So no one has any midterms um this year.
And that, that includes middle school?
Yes, exactly. Middle school never has midterms, but yes. Yes, exactly. Middle school never has midterms, but yes. So middle and high school, no, there are no midterms.
Thank you, Ms. Carriero. Uh, sorry, I was read that as cancel the question, so I'm glad you. Read over that and and now back to uh, is there a motion as I put forth previously?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, any discussion? Okay, Mary, please open the voting. I vote aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye too.
Thank you.
I have my computer, Mary, going.
All right, that's unanimous.
Great, thank you, everybody. Uh, faculty, staff, administration, thank you very much. Uh, those going to the executive session, there's an email link in your uh email. Everyone else, have a good evening. Thank you.